I'd like to call to order the, what day is it? Tuesday, June 2nd. Special Committee of the whole meeting. It is 6:39. And all councilors are present with the exception of Council Boardelon, who has a family commitment and will be joining us as soon as possible. New business. For those at home, I'll just stop for one second and do this. What's going to happen tonight is we have the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting, in which we have discussion on the various tax rate scenarios. And then we adjourn that meeting and we go into the town council meeting. When we go into the town council meeting is when the citizens petitions will take place. So those of you ready to speak, I know we have some attendees that may be wishing to speak or people listening at home wanting to hear the citizens petitions. That will happen at the council meeting, which will follow immediately the special COW that we are in right now. Okay, so that's just to help clarify things for everybody. All right, so we are into 2020-362 Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund FYE 2021. And how we should do this this evening is we should have a motion on the floor that's just a generic motion as found on page three in your packet. And then at that point, we will entertain amendments to that depending on which way you want to go as far as use of fund balance, et cetera. So is there a motion for 2020-362 Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund?
So moved.
Moved by Zepary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Okay, so at this point, the Finance Director has sent out, I think, eight scenarios. And the difference between them is the assumption of tax collection and the use of fund balance. And we've all had a chance to look at that. So at this point, I'll open the floor to discussion. Anyone like to speak on this item? Council Bumgardner and then Aubrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first and foremost, would like to thank Cindy, our wonderful Director of Finance Cindy Landry, on all of your hard work throughout this budget cycle. I know this budget cycle was a first of many for all of us, including deliberating on this budget entirely through Zoom, virtually. So, you know, we can, you know, mark it down and it's one for the books. And I think that we did it very well despite, you know, actually very few setbacks. But despite some of the technical difficulties at times. So again, thank you Cindy and thank you John as well for shepherding us throughout this process. And so I guess my question to you Cindy would be on, how did you come, arrive at the revised collection rate of 98.1% as opposed to, you know, a collection rate at a lower percentage? Or even a higher percentage?
Knowing that the tax collections have already dropped some and anticipating that they'll drop throughout after July 1st, what I did is I went back to 2007. And I looked at the years 2007 to 2011 to see what the rate might have dropped down during that period, that downturn period. And for those years, we maintained the 98.1. So I thought if during that difficult time, we could maintain the 98.1, that that would be a good percentage to use going forward into '21.
Thank you Cindy. And my follow-up question would be, say we were to, you know, we were to receive an additional windfall of tax revenue. Say we exceed that collection rate. Say it's the normal 98, you know, 99% or above. Would those funds go directly into our fund balance?
Yes, they would. If the tax revenue came in higher than expected, it would flow into fund balance at the end of the year, assuming that we didn't have any other revenue that would become under budget.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And just to note, Council Boardelon is here, so we are at nine councilors. Council Aubrey, you have the floor.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Is it possible you could just let me know where we're at in the agenda? As I apologize for my late attendance due to the house closing. If you could just let me know where we're at. Thank you.
Patrice, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Heatt. We are on 2020-362 Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund. And what we have on the floor right now is the generic motion that was in the COW packet, just a motion to approve a resolution. And we just opened discussion. Council Bumgardner started off asking about the collection percentage and how the Finance Director arrived at that. There are no other motions on the floor at this point. And Council Aubrey has the floor.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna wait on my question if I might. Thank you.
Okay, Council Heatt.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Generally speaking, I'm in favor of paying as we go. I'm not really a fan of using fund balance. That's generally speaking, of course, this year we're in an unusual situation. And last year, I did vote to use that just for the record. As I understood that the economic growth that had continued, you know, several years ago would continue at least another two or three years. And there's a lower chance, not a lower chance, basically a lower return on higher levels of fund balance. So 15% seems to be right about where we should, we should try and keep it. But I have other concerns. I mean, as we're considering this, we have, we have to consider, you know, there could be a less cash flow next year than the 98.1%. So we could end up having to dig a little bit deeper into the fund balance. There are other headwinds coming at us like a potentially negative outcome of legal action with Pfizer. We're also going through the school construction project. And, you know, it'd be good to know if we're looking at any construction over spends. You know, that doesn't always happen, but sometimes it does. And then, of course, you know, there are always competing priorities when it comes to town spending. And, you know, one of the reasons the original budget was, was that John Bird had submitted to us was going up so fast because for years, a lot of things have been neglected. So I think it would be good to not use fund balance this year. I think the amount is very small. The impact to the property taxes is very small. I know a lot of people are in economic distress, but, you know, it's, I don't think it's that much. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I just wanted to put it out there for everyone to understand where I am on this. Thank you.
Did you wish to make a motion, Council Heatt?
I do not.
Thank you. Council Zepary and then Bumgardner.
I may have missed it. It may have been already said, but what is the fund balance at now? I know it's around 24 million, is it? What is the fund balance now?
It's about 20-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, it's about 23 million.
22?
23.
And what percentage is that of our annual budget?
At 18%.
So we're at 18% and we had decided we wanted to stay at 15%?
Not below that, isn't right.
Right?
That would be our minimum.
So if we take money out of that, will it pass us, of course, cause us to go below 15%?
Yeah, it would not.
Unless we get hit by revenue losses.
Yeah.
So as far as taking money out of the fund balance, the fund balance is now higher than it should be. And that money should be returned to the taxpayer in the form of keeping the mill rate down. Since our goal in our decision previously was to make it at 15%, it's currently at 18%. If we take the money out of the, the fund to keep the tax rate down, it is essentially returning that money to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zepary. Council Bumgardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to align my remarks with Council Heatt's. If you recall in our, when we were first deliberating on setting the calculation of our tax rate, I discussed some fears about whether or not the town was going to be able to collect the amount of taxes that we were anticipating. And obviously, our Director is recommending to us that, you know, we lower that assumption. And so, you know, I think it goes without saying, our council has done Yaukman's work identifying efficiencies and making cuts. And certainly, you know, in future years, we can continue looking at how we can make our town a more efficient town government. But I also believe that in future years, as Council Heatt suggested, we are going to be expecting very uncertain times, whether it be having to pay for items that we that we don't for, having forecasted confronting, whether it be providing services and capital improvements that we deferred, whether it be roads improvements, you know. So there is a host of issues on top of unprecedented debt increase, debt service payment. So, you know, when you compound all these issues, you know, we may face the reality that, you know, we will have to ultimately raise taxes accordingly, since we can only cut so much. So, you know, I would be in favor of leaving our fund balance alone to provide a cushion, especially as our town will be confronting COVID-19 pandemic. And so I would not, I much prefer that we do not tap into fund balance in that time, at this time. So with that, I'd be willing to make a motion to reflect that. Let me get that out. There we go. So with that, I will make a motion. John, I lost sight of your attachments that you sent to us. Bear with me, my apologies.
That's fine.
Well, we'll make a motion to use the 98.1 tax collection rate. Point of inquiry.
Yes.
Would I have to read the entire resolution?
Mr. Bird, if he just specifies the amount of fund balance and the collection rate, is that sufficient? Or would you like him to read the whole resolution?
The resolution's for the next meeting. If you just say that, that's fine.
Okay. So you can just state your wish as far as collection rate and use of fund balance, please?
Okay, so I'll call out, make a motion to use the collection rate of 98.1% and without using any fund balance. So moved.
Moved by Bumgardner. Is there a second?
Second, Heatt.
Seconded by Heatt. Council Bumgardner, did you wish to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Council Boardelon? And then Aubrey.
Just for clarification, are we speaking to Andrea's motion or just about this in general?
His motion is on the floor, but you haven't spoken yet, so you can speak to either at this point.
I too have concerns about using too much fund balance. I also think the mill rate should be low, so we're kind of in a bit of a bind here. I feel that it's really important to look at all the numbers considering what's going on. And one question I have is what will constantly using our fund balance to whatever level, how does that affect our rating when we get rerated every year? Wasn't that part of on the disclosure page of that article where it stated one of the things why we're not like a triple A? If I understand correctly, it has to do with using fund balance? Or can someone clarify that for me?
Well, number-
Negative.
Number one, they want to see you at least keep the 15% fund balance. But if they see you continuously year after year using fund balance, they don't tend to like that and that could ultimately affect us, but not as quickly as dipping below the 15%.
Right, so I guess I would want to take in consideration the use of the fund balance in its entirety as well as making sure we don't dip below the 15. But we cannot solely depend on fund balance year after year. And we have to have another means to support the town and make sure that we have the cushion there. So, thank you.
Council Aubrey and then Zepary.
I don't think that the amounts that we're taking out are that high. But I'm not comfortable with doing it because of the fact that when we worked on this budget, we had no idea what was ahead. And we still don't know what's ahead. And I think this winter's going to be very difficult for a lot of people to pay their taxes. The small difference isn't going to be the problem. It's going to be the people that just aren't going to be working this winter. We, at this point, we don't know what businesses are really going to reopen. We don't know the effect of what we're going through on a lot of people that are working. A lot of people aren't going to be rehired because businesses are going to have to keep their staff low. And I think we should keep the monies that we have and go forward without it and be prepared for even a worse situation ahead. Because I do think that, I'm not a pessimist. I'm always an optimist. But right now, I think I'm a bit of a pessimist because nobody can judge what we do have ahead. There's some very good signs going on. I mean, Groton is very active as far as real estate is. We have people coming into the town and that's good. We should be making quite a bit of money on the conveyance stacks. But I think at this point, we should keep our money that we do have put away. It's like our savings at every household you hope have a little bit of. And they're not spending that. They're trying to hold on to it. And I think the town needs to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Aubrey. Council Zepary.
I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, we, we all met when this crisis was already on and we passed this budget with intention to use a portion of the fund balance to keep the mill rate down. We all are aware that we were going, at that time, we were aware that we were going into a, an economic decline that would be severe. Our forecast has been fulfilled. We are in a severe economic decline. An increase in the mill rate would result in a greater strain on people who are already stressed. We have excess funds over what we said we needed to keep in our reserve fund. And we are above that by somewhere around 20% of what we said we needed to have. So I really think that we should go ahead with the plan we made when we passed this budget back in March. Things are only coming to be as we anticipated at that time. And I don't think we should waffle or weaken. So I really am opposed to this motion to not take the money from the reserve fund as previously planned.
If I might.
Council Aubrey.
I think that when we did the budget, we were somewhat into it, but we did not anticipate the magnitude of what's going on, Council Zepary. And we also didn't under, we had no idea of what was going to happen to us nationally right now. And the cost of the pandemic, the cost of what's happening now, I mean, those things are going to be, we're going to be affected when it comes time for us to be starting to get our monies from the state government and the federal government. You know, we just, we just truly have no idea. We've got to fight our way through it and I have no problem with doing that. But for these small amounts, because we're really not talking a lot of money, but I'd rather have it in my savings account than trying to chase it later. So I do understand your position. I'm very torn on this. I agree with Council Superior in many aspects of it. But I think I'd rather choose to keep the money, keep the money where it is.
Council Franco hasn't spoken yet and then we can go back to Council Zepary.
I would like to ask Cindy, when do we find out our funding from this state?
Well, our budget is put together with the, what's in the governor's budget that he issues in February. And that's what we base the budget on. And as of now, we have not heard anything about state levels being cut. That's always on the table, in my opinion. If you remember the year in the fall, we had significant cuts to state grants. But in, in my mind, that's one of the reasons we have the fund balance. And that's what we would look to if we were to have a reduction in state revenue.
Thank you. Also, so what is at 15%? What is the dollar amount that would be in the fund balance at 15%?
You know, I didn't, I didn't bring a calculator.
Sorry?
Yeah, well, let me see. Sorry, I didn't bring that with me. I'm trying to figure it out here.
Okay, take your time.
While Cindy's figuring that out, I'd also like to state that we didn't have an actual plan back in March when we went over the budget. That was a town manager recommendation that was in his budget that we were working off of. And we were making adjustments to his budget. And by using the fund balance or not using the fund balance is our decision that we make now and today. So there was a town manager's initial plan back before all of this had started. So my concern is that if we get cut by the state and we've used some of our fund balance and it brings us closer to 15% and then the state cuts us and we have to use more fund balance to make it up, we may go below 15% and then we won't have much room if we ever need more in the future. We were very fortunate to have unforeseen funds that have come into the fund balance over the past couple of years that have grown it to be so large. Because I do recall when we first got onto the council, we, well, actually, right before we got on the council, they were at 7.5 basically is what they're, what they were charged with holding on to as a minimum. And we are currently at 15. And I can remember Rich, Council Marazik, was, would tell me how hard it would be to just increase the fund balance by even half percent and how hard it would be. And we have received so many funds over, you know, unforeseen funds that have been able to help grow us. So I, as much as I would like to keep the mill rate down and not put an additional burden on anybody in our town, especially in these times, because I agree with Council Aubrey and we actually had this discussion today on the state of our economy. I think extremely tough times are ahead of us and as a country. And it's very unforeseen how, what's going to happen with our state and what funding is going to come from our state and how much we can rely on them. So I'm, as much as I would probably normally wouldn't mind using a little bit, this is, I don't feel this is the right time. But I'd like to hear from Director Landry if she has that calculation ready.
Using the $130 million of the 21 budget at 15% would bring us down to 19 million. And I just wanted to add too, that when we changed, when we updated the fiscal policy, debt policy and management policy and we increased that from the seven and three quarters, you're right, to between 11 and 15, there is also a provision in that if we dip below that, we have to design a plan to build it back up. So we just would have to keep that in mind if something unforeseen were to happen and we were to go below those percentages.
Right, because we're currently, our minimum is actually on paper as 11%.
Right, but well, it was 11% was our minimum with a goal of 15.
Right, but we actually haven't changed it to 15 yet. That's to make it permanent as a 15. Is that correct? We're at 11.
Well, 11 is the bare minimum, but 15 is the goal, right? Though that's not the max. Everyone should keep that in mind.
Right, that was, I understand that. I completely understand that. And so right now, we have $4 million of wiggle room. So if the state came to us like they do in the past and said, you know what? We're cutting you by $5 million this year, where would we be? And that's what worries me. So I would like to keep the money in our rainy day fund. And in case it rains and the state decides to cut us drastically, like they have threatened to in the past. And with the economy the way it is, they actually might have to do it at some point in the coming years. So.
I just wanted to add too, that what we also have to bear in mind is although the Board of Ed is an alliance district and that's typically a five-year designation, we are probably, will be looking at that significant cut to ECS once we are no longer an alliance district. And it was about $5 million.
Yeah, I recall that. And I also, I think some other, other towns have asked to stay on as alliance districts, even though they have graduated out of it. And I think there's also been some, there might be some room to, to work and maneuver with that a little bit and maybe ask for incremental cuts, cuts in our funding. So it's not so drastic all at once. And I also recall seeing Motville, who did get a drastic cut when that happened. And they asked for a variance and they received it from the state so that the town didn't have to make up the difference. So I think there are some variables that might happen with that. I mean, I'm not sure of how it all might pan out, but I truly understand what you're talking about. And I thank you. So I, I have to stand right now that we shouldn't use the fund balance in my perspective. Thank you.
We have Council Zepary and Melinda. As Council Zepary, I would ask if you would yield to Council Melinda since he hasn't spoken yet?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so if we're at 23 million right now and that's 23% and then using 1.5 million, bring us down to 21.5 million fund balance. That's 16 and a half percent. So we would be about two and a half million above our stated goal of 15%. Which sounds good until, I think you take into consideration that our 98.1% collection rate is just an estimation and we don't know if that's actually what it's going to be. So if it's under that, we would have to use more money than, than the 1.5 million to make up the difference. So if going under the 15% has the ability to negatively impact our, our bond rating, then I think we should take a conservative approach and, and ensure that we stay over that 15%. our bond rating, then I think we should take a conservative approach and, and ensure that we stay over that 15%.
Thank you. Councils of Perry.
I think that we're saying that we might need more money than we had anticipated because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. But I think that we already, and the other thing, we, you know, this faulty reasoning bothers me. We really didn't know how bad this was going to be. In March, we knew this was going to be bad. In March, we took pains to cut the budget so that we could cut the burden on taxpayers who were losing their jobs, who had lost income, even if they didn't lose their jobs, and we wanted to protect them. Now we want to protect the town from a possible need for additional funds. And we, we don't definitely know what those possibilities are. And we want, we want to protect the town, but bear in mind, we do that at the expense of the taxpayers. We do that at the expense of the people of Groton. The town of Groton belongs to the people, and we should represent the people. We should keep the town solvent, and we've taken pains to do that by raising the, the reserve fund to 15%. Now that it's so much higher than 15%, we should use it to serve the people. And that's why I am adamantly opposed to the changing of the decision we made in March to use a portion of the reserve fund to keep the mill rate down. If we take away that portion, the mill rate goes up. Now, I still haven't heard what the mill rate will be if we take away the contribution from the reserve fund.
It's in the.
So Director Landry produced very detailed forecasts for us, and that is in there. It was mailed out, I believe, yesterday. If, no, it was mailed out even before then, I believe. The most recent one was dated today. And the, let's see, where is it?
A little bit after 2 o'clock, I think.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think it was a little bit after 2 o'clock. I resent it again today, like around 2:10, 2:12.
So if zero is used, we're looking at 24.17, right? But this is something that I was hoping we could talk about. One of the, the easiest ways for people to understand this is to look at the impact on the average homeowner. And Director Landry has gone through and done calculations based on every hundred thousand of value of your home. And I'm not sure, are you comfortable discussing that, Director Landry? The differences between using zero and 1.5, would you walk us through that, please?
First to under the 98.1.
Yeah, okay, using the 98.1 scenario, if we did not use any fund balance, the current mill rate is 24.17, and it would require an increase of .94 of a mil. So it would be, it would bring the mill rate to 25.11. So if you look at the 100,000, $200,000, $300,000 house, you will see I have a column that has the annual tax increase, and that's broken out into the monthly and a weekly. And it translates into a 3.9% increase. The second block down below would be what we had passed with the preliminary mill rates of the $1.5 million of fund balance. That would require a .53 increase to the mill rate, bringing it to 24.7. And again, it just goes across with the annual increase, monthly and weekly, for a 100, 200, or $300,000 house. Does that answer your question?
Again, how much it comes up to as an annual increase for each house?
Okay, if your house was assessed at $100,000 and we did not use any fund balance, you would have a $94 a year increase. If your house is assessed at 200,000, it would be $188 a year. 300,000 would be $282 a year. And you can compare that to if we used a million and a half. Instead of being $94, it would be $53. Instead of $188, it'd be $106. And instead of 282, it'd be $159.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Landry. Okay, we have Council Heed and Franco in the queue. Council Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate that we, in March, we, as a council, we did cut the proposed budget. But the proposal was to use fund balance was made by the town manager. That was not something I ever thought was a particularly good idea. And, you know, but, but that being said, you know, I, as somebody who has been furloughed during the pandemic, you know, I know what it is to lose your income. And I'm concerned about people who, you know, my, my property taxes are paid through, through the bank. I forget what that's called, but. escrow, yes, it's paid through escrow. I expect to go back to work in July, at least until the pandemic comes back around in the fall or the winter. One never knows what, what will happen then. So I, you know, I understand that, that people are concerned about money and that this is a rainy, this is definitely a rainstorm if you ever had one. But, you know, $94, the, the impact on my taxes will be the $188 for the year. It's not that I think it's a good idea that we ask people to pay that. What I, what I'm concerned is that that 98.1% collection rate, if it goes below that, we're really kind of going to need the people who are still working and who still can't afford to make that change, that they're able to kick in a little bit. You know, my escrow will, will still pay my taxes, so I'm not concerned there. But, you know, I, I just think that there, we have to balance being responsible to the citizens and understanding their needs, and also being responsible and attentive to the finances of the town, because this year is going to be bad, next year could be worse. So maybe next year is the year that we have to use fund balance. That's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a turn before we go back to second-time speakers. My concern is, and I know Councils of Perry is not fond of basing decisions on the unknown. But we are in a situation where we know for certain that we are in the middle of litigation. And we know we were going to have, we don't know. We are probably going to have a very big payout based on the litigation. And we are also looking at education funding dropping, and that concerns me. Granted, we did go through the budget, assuming we would use 1.5. But there, there was no, there's nothing definitive at that point. This is why we're here tonight, to bandy this about and figure out what we think is the best thing to do. When we look at the numbers that the finance director generated for us, the difference between using zero and using 1.5 million for a house that's $200,000 is what? $80, $80 a year is the difference. Which, if you're not working, $80 a year, you know, it's, it's something. But 1.5 million gone from our fund balance could really help out when it's time to settle debts that we're going to have. So I'm really kind of torn at this point. I echo what Council O'Bree said earlier and her sentiments. But I agree, it's, it's not an easy choice at this point. So we are, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet want to speak before I go back again?
I would like to. Just a question. Director Landry, in all you, all the years you've been here, have we gone, ever gone under 98.1 before 2007?
Hold on just a minute. I'm just going to see if I happen to have brought that paperwork with me. Okay, I do have it with me. We did. 2004, 2003, 2002, 2001. They were all under 98.1. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask, could you give us the percentages of that time period?
Sure. As I said, I had gone back.
If you have.
Yeah, I have went from 2007 to 2011 is what I was looking at. So in 2006, we were at 98.3 for six and 2005. 2004 was 97.9, 2003 was 98, 2002 was 97.5. 2001 was 97.9, 2000 was 98.1, and 1999 was 97.5.
So we've had some years where there, there have been ups and downs.
Council Parker, it's happening again with your speaker.
Maybe you can tape it.
Council Parker, it happened again with your speaker. Should we go on and come back? We'll go on and come back. I would ask Council Franco and Bordelon if you have the floor and Councilor Parker's back.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
That worked?
You can hear you, yeah?
She's muted. Council Parker, you muted yourself.
Go, go ahead to the next person.
Okay, very good. Council Franco and then Bordelon.
Rachel, you're muted.
Thank you. I think the question from Councilor Parker was really good, and seeing the history, and 98.1 is not always, you know, a sustainable number, as you can see historically. I would guess in hard times, it's really hard to figure these things out. I would just like to say that as a town counselor, being lectured by another town counselor of what we did in the past, and saying to me that we decided this, we did not decide this in the past. There was not a vote. None of us voted on whether we were going to use fund balance. It was clearly the town manager's budget. And we chose how to spend the money in the budget, and today we are deciding on what to do with the fund balance. So when I keep hearing that we made a decision, we did not make a decision. We are making the decision today. So I just want to make that quite clear to anybody who's listening out there. There was no decision in the past. This is being decided today. Thank you.
Council Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. When you look at those increases and you speak about homeowners, we have to look at the broader picture because renters in this town make up a large population of folks. And when you increase mill rates, renters then, they can't just eat the cost. So a lot of people say, oh, well, it's, you know, it's the homeowners. It's, you know, they, they pay the taxes. It's the whole town as a whole, because the renters pay the tax for the homeowner to be able to give the taxes to the town. So when those numbers go up, it directly affects some of our most vulnerable people in our town that I feel, that I know of, that, that $83 to a person who's a homeowner, who's, you know, possibly at the time of a home purchase or whenever, might be in better credit standings, or obviously is able to, quote, you know, afford to own a home at that time, or chose to own a home, or renters sometimes just rent because they haven't found the right home. But either way, as a whole, we're, we're all paying that tax. And my concern is it might be just $80 a year for one person, but people on a fixed income, it is a high number. Or 100, or depending on how that particular property that they're living in, if it has eight, eight apartments in it, right? And that property is assessed at 450,000, that landlord is going to have to raise the, the prices. They can't just eat those numbers. Now they're, they're just renting for free. So, but I'm also concerned about using the fund balance. But it brings me back to the original budget. Yes, we did not know where we were going to be at this point. And I would have to say for the record that I was not in agreement with plowing through the budget in one week as we did, even though it was precedents, you know, times that were hard, we did the best that we could. But there were a number of areas there that I don't think we should have funded, and there's other areas there that should have been funded. And now we're at the fund balance, when I think that the budget should have been possibly cut in other areas, and looking at the town as a whole under a different umbrella. Under, you know, outside services, we barely funded some of those items. Some things were zeroed out, and people didn't want to refund any of that. And now we're concerned about $83 for a homeowner, but people did not want to fund meals on wheels and outside services and rape crisis centers, and that was something I was passionate about. And then people were still fighting to, not fighting, discussing to fund a bridge that the other side of town was not willing to fund this year. And I was passionate to have that bridge, you know, funded and up and running. So I really think we have to look at where our priorities are, and I think we, we all have a right to our opinions, and I think it's important. But where is the middle road in this? Where do we meet the needs of the homeowner in all taxpayers? Because as I state, renters are taxpayers in this town. They also are a huge part of the economy on many different avenues. And $83 or any increase is, is an increase for some that are on fixed incomes. So we really, I, I'm completely torn, and I think I'm having trouble looking at the fund balance as a whole, because I still think the budget had other areas that we should have cut. And looking at that, if we're going to micromanage the fund balance, I do feel that there's other sections of the budget that could have been adequately deleted or reallocated in a way that would have allowed that fund balance usage to be much lower than what is being presented. So I, I don't know, what would be a middle number to, to kind of meet the needs of the town, to increase, but not to, you know, totally use a large amount of fund balance, looking at the town as, as a whole as it functions. We don't know what we're up for, and we do, do not know what funding we are going to need moving forward. And what does that look like from a municipality standpoint as far as our, our employees in this town? I mean, those are hard questions that could come down the road, that we, no one wants to talk about. But those are things that are going to be on the table soon or down the road, looking at these numbers. So I, I think I'd like to look at a middle number somewhere. Thank you.
So Council, Council Bordelon, Director Landry produced four different scenarios, anywhere from zero to 750,000 used, 1.5 used, and 3.39 used. So she produced all those numbers for us. So did you wish to make a motion at this point, or should we go on with discussion?
Thank you for asking. I'm still collaborating here, and I'll continue to listen, but thank you.
All right, Councilors of Perry and then Melendez.
I have a question for Mr. Burt. It said that, Council Franco said that you, you inserted the use of the, of the reserve fund without council approval. Is that, I, I thought we did vote on that, but I may be mistaken. Do you have a recollection?
Well, I'm required to present a budget to the council, which includes any recommended use of fund balance, and that's where the 1.5 came in at. So that was presented to the council. And then the council really votes on the expenditures at that point. And you set a tentative mill rate, and then it goes RTM for any changes, and then it comes back to you with those changes incorporated for you then now to set the final mill rate.
So, so did we know that you were contemplating using a portion of the fund balance to keep the mill rate down at that time?
Yes. Yes.
We knew that?
Yes.
And we voted to approve that?
Tentative mill rate, right.
Okay. So that's one part of it. I would like to applaud Portia Bordelon's analysis and stand behind her. We should have considered these things before. There were other things that should have been cut from the budget, we didn't. On the other hand, we went through the budget and we decided what we were gonna do together, and we should stick with it. The recession that we're in now was forecast very clearly at that time, and we reacted to it by making some cuts in the budget at that time. Now we're raffling on this thing because we're concerned about events that we don't know will happen in the future. But at the same time, we are certain that we are gonna impose an increase in taxes on our people by throwing away this opportunity to keep the tax down and use portion of the fund balance. Thank you.
Okay, we have quite a few counselors who wish to speak. I'm gonna go with the people that have spoken less first. So we're gonna go with Melendez, Baumgartner, Heed, and then Bordelon.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my, the point that I made where if we use one point five million, we'd be at twenty-one point five million. That's about sixteen and a half percent at this year's budget of one hundred and thirty million. But we cut a lot out of this budget, and next year's budget is going to be larger than this year's budget. So we're two and a half million over the fifteen percent for this year's budget, but next year's budget, we're gonna be even closer to that fifteen percent, it might even dip below because the budget, I mean, it started out at one hundred and thirty-five million this year. We cut five million out. That's not sustainable to do every single year. So if you assume next year's budget's gonna be one hundred and thirty-five million or even higher, then we're already, with the twenty-one and a half million, we're already dipping really close to the fifteen percent. So we're assuming we're, you know, so far over the fifteen percent. That's just because we cut so much out of the budget this year.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner and then Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remind Counselors Zepary that the council was not unanimous in approving the computation of the of the collection rate, as well as setting aside one point five million dollars of fund balance to use towards our budget. I voted against that, as did Counselordelon. I can't speak for Counselordelon, her reasoning for voting against it, but my reasons largely dealt with the fact that I, you know, I felt we were not in a position to use fund balance at a time when, you know, we were facing unprecedented times. And we just simply don't know how much fund balance or ready day funds we must use in the future if our revenues are, if we have a shortfall in anticipated revenues. So, you know, I was in opposition to that, and, you know, I also had fears of our collection rate, our inability to collect taxes as we have in more recent years where the collection rate has been a little higher. So, you know, I say that because, you know, today we are, after hearing Director Landry give her remarks about the budget, we are in a very limited position to now reduce any, reduce spending without significantly cutting expenditures. So, you know, I do wonder, many of, in this council meeting have brought up where we can cut. And, you know, in many respects, several of us proposed, including myself, to, you know, to support spending in other areas that the council ultimately reduced. And, you know, in retrospect, I, you know, especially considering that we're facing an economic crisis, I think we have to go in that direction, you know. There, this budget isn't a, you know, a reflection of all of our, you know, all of our wants, but really, you know, it is a reflection of what the times necessitate. You know, we have to live within our means, but we also have to be mindful that if we do significantly reduce services, that there is also a cost that citizens and residents bear. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. I'd just like to remind the council that this evening, your comments should be pertaining to setting the mill rate. We cannot go back in and rehash the budget at this point. We can look forward as to what we, you know, might want to do in the future, what's down the road ahead of us. But there's nothing we can do about the budget at this point. It's set. So now our job tonight is to figure out what we want to do as far as mill rate and use of fund balance. We are on to Counselor Heed next, please.
Madam Mayor, that actually was my main point. And I guess the second point that I would like to make is, you know, maybe my four years on the town and city councils and three years on the RTM budget process, my understanding of the vote that the town council took when we accepted the, when we finalized our budget to pass it on to the RTM, is that there's no telling what the RTM would do. They could have increased things, they could have made additional cuts. They instead actually approved the budget that we passed. So it was kind of a routine vote to have argued over what to do with mill rate at that time would have been pointless. So to me, it was just, we needed to pass it on to the RTM, and then when it comes back to us with the final number, then we decide. And so that's where I, that's where I am, is I'm right here where I want to decide. And my decision would be to support the zero percent of, no, zero percent of fund balance use. Thank you.
We have Counselor Bordelon, and then I think I saw O'Bree's hand.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm just looking at, you know, to Counselor Baumgartner's points, you know, I did not support using the vote for fund balance in this entirety, in this level. I mean, it's a hard number to look at. Looking at some of the other towns and other states, they put raise freezes in. Once again, can't go back now, but we can't, as a town municipality, increase raises at high numbers, high percents, greater than, you know, other people are getting, and then say, well, we don't want to burden people with the eighty dollars, or we do want to burden them with the eighty dollars. We really need to, once again, I was not for, I feel that the budget was rushed from the beginning in one week, that one day budget process. I do think that we did the best that we could do, and there's no discredit to any of the other councillors. I didn't have the majority not to slow that down, and so here we are, and now we're on to the fund, the fund balance. I think there's, there could have been a better way to do this in the future. I think when we're in a state of crisis and there is an alarming situation going on, I think resurrecting a committee of councillors, municipality stakeholders, police department officials, town members, Board of Ed members, and superintendent to discuss the town as a whole before making quick decisions and pushing a budget through in a day. Thank you.
We are on to Counselor O'Bree.
There were just two things I wanted to mention. I'm not making small of it, but you know, that eighty-four dollar, or eighty-three dollars, or whatever it might be, that comes out to like twenty-three cents a day. Probably every one of us at the end of the day throw that much change in a cup. So it's not really an unsummountable amount. Now, for some people, that might be buying something, and I understand that. But the other thing is that Cindy made us aware, and I apologize for calling Cindy, I can't think of your last name, but she has here, the current tax revenue is down four hundred and fifty-one K from March and April when compared to two thousand and nineteen, and collections are expected to be seven hundred and thirty K on the budget by June thirtieth. So, you know, we're not going up, we're going down. And we, and I'm sorry, in March, I had no idea where we'd be in June. So I think that we have to leave that money where it is. We'll all count our change a little bit more at the end of the year. And I really think that's the only way that we can go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a first amended motion on the floor, and all the counselors have spoken. Would anyone else like to speak?
Can you just repeat the motions on the floor just for clarification, please?
Counselor Baumgartner's is the first amended motion. That's the one we would vote first. His motion is to use a ninety-eight point one percent collection rate and zero fund balance. Do any other counselors wish to speak at this point?
Madam Mayor, also, there was another motion from Baumgartner, correct, or no?
No. The original motion was just to get the discussion opened, and it read to recommend a resolution to approve the tax rate for the general fund. It was a generic motion to open the floor for discussion. The only amendment that has any numbers in it is Counselor Baumgartner's first amended motion. Do any other counselors wish to speak? Trying to give everybody a chance. Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote on, sorry for the flipping of papers, twenty-two thousand three six two, computation of tax rate for general fund. We are voting on the amended motion, which is relying on ninety-eight point one percent collection rate and zero use of fund balance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? That motion passes, eight in favor, one opposed, a Perry, zero abstentions. Yes, Counselor Baumgartner.
There is, in the Zoom webinar chat box, there's a note from Counselor Parker, I believe, for the vote, and she says abstain.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Counselor Parker, you are muted. I will, let me adjust that vote. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Baumgartner. I'm seeing Counselor Parker in the tiled version. There you go.
I know, I don't know if it's gonna cut in and out, so I figured I better put it in the chat.
Okay, so are you an abstention on the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So let me adjust that vote then. So we have seven in favor, one opposed, a Perry, one abstention, Parker. All right, very good. We are on to twenty-two thousand three six three, computation of tax rate for Mumford Co. Mr. Burt, if you could jump in here, please. All we're doing is just approving the resolution that's in the cow packet, and that will eventually match what happens with the general fund, correct?
Correct, though you don't have to read the resolution at this point, just like before, the just a motion.
Recommend, very good. So let's see, who would that be? That would be, who started that? Counselor Baumgartner, would you like to read this one as well, please? We'll start at your end of the table again.
You're muted, Counselor Baumgartner.
You wouldn't say, "Thank you, Counselor Heed." I'll move that we pass a resolution establishing the tax rate for Mumford Cove District due July first, twenty twenty.
That's all you need to say.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Parker. Any discussion or questions, or would the Finance Director and Mr. Burt like to speak to this?
No, we don't have anything. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. I see no discussion. I'm waiting, just in case. All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. And we are on to twenty-two thousand three six four, computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District. I move to recommend a resolution to approve the tax rate for the Groton Sewer District. Is there a second?
I'll move.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by O'Bree. Is there discussion on this, or did Mr. Burt or Director Landry wish to speak to this item?
Again, oh, did you have?
No, I just wanted to say, for the sewer district, as we know, this was an increase for the sewer district this year to cover the debt service for the water pollution control bonded project.
Thank you, Director Landry. Counselors with questions? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? So moved unanimously. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the cow.
So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded, we'll say seconded by Zepary. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at seven forty-four. And would you like to take a five-minute break before we start the council?
Yes, please.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break before we start the council meeting.